All right, I'm ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Satellite Beach, the City Council Meeting. The date is November 14th, 2012. This is the regular meeting. The time is 6:00 PM. I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Rhodes.
Please rise. Do a brief prayer. Oh, my God, thank you for this day. We pray for protection for our police and firefighters and those troops overseas defending our country. And we pray for a good transition next meeting for our new elected council members and guide us in our meeting this evening. In your name we pray. Amen. You pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Before I start, I'd like, of course, some congratulations are in order, and I'd like to say congratulations to Councilmember-elect Moraine Dodd. Moraine, welcome. Councilmember-elect Mark Reimer. Mark. And Mayor-elect, lucky number 13. I was number 12. Number 13, I told Frank, Frank Cattino, congratulations. Everyone had a well-run, great campaign, and congratulations and welcome. All right. Citizen recognition, and I'm going to turn this over to Chief Pearson.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Police Chief in Satellite Beach, Jeff Pearson. And we are here once again to recognize the volunteers that we have at the Police Department. If you've been to any meetings in the past where this has been done, I think you probably would all agree that the group of people that we have are pretty impressive in the things that they do. Not just the money they save, but the things that they do on a regular basis that saves staff time and police officer time and sometimes other city staff, not just the Police Department, from having to go out and do things that would detract them from doing the things that they do best, the policing the city or manning an office or doing whatever they do. And without them, we'd be lost, really. What we're here to do is a couple of years of service pins and then to announce our volunteer of the year. I just want to cut to the chase right here at the beginning because I just, I think this is some of the most impressive part. The volunteers that put in all these hours, you know, if you were to try to reduce it to a number, which is very difficult to do, and people try to put things, put a number of things, and you really can't, if you work with these people on a day-to-day basis and see that they even understand that just putting a dollar figure doesn't really do it justice, but it sure is a nice enough number, a lot of trouble out there anyway. Based on the volunteer total number of hours donated this year, they provided at a cost, the basic cost saving by the federal government on what volunteers cost, the RSDP program has it all right down to a penny of what a volunteer costs, and you don't make this stuff up, this is all recognized numbers, but they have provided a cost saving to our city of $80,891. Nine hours of their provide. We have four five-year pins. Five years of service. First one is first amateur. Five-year pin for Tony Chalmers, and his wife is here to accept for him. Five-year pin for Shannon Ryan. And Shannon is the son of our records, record official. And our final five-year pin is for Lane Buss. Five years of dedicated service. And we have one 10-year pin for tonight, and that is Bob Marcher. Bob is not here, but we still have a pin for him. It's on YouTube. It's on YouTube. We got it. Okay, we have two 15-year pins. Right, think about that, 15 years, and how many hours and hours and hours and hours that these people have accumulated? It's, it really is staggering. Two 15-year pins. First one is for Marietta Restivo. And a 15-year pin for Bill Action. Now, as sometimes happens in trying to decide the volunteer of the year, you get down and certainly it's not all just about, you know, who does the most hours or anything like that. There's a variety of things that Linda and June and some of the other people get together and spend a lot of time. And for those who don't know, Linda Harlow is the one that is in charge of the program, and she's now doing it by herself with Beverly's help because Beverly got thrown in the mix when June left, and June was doing it, and now the two of them are going back and forth and feeding off each other and having a great time, and trying to come up with who's going to be the volunteer of the year is very difficult. So they finally got down to two people and just could decide. So they decided to have two volunteer of the years because they didn't want to make a decision. I told them coin flipping and arm wrestling, they weren't into any of that. So the 2002 volunteer of the year, or 2012, the two volunteers are Bob Becker and George Anderson. She wrote the name on it, that's why I didn't get it home.
How long have you been doing this? 15 years?
One year.
One year.
My first year. Because I'm very happy and very honored and pleased, and I've been a resident of Satellite Beach for 27 years, and this is my way of giving back to the community what they've done to me over the past 27 years. Wonderful city.
Hey, and I had 18 years.
18 years.
37 years as a resident of Satellite Beach.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Before you sit down, we got just a couple of reasons why you got here. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but the people want to hear just a couple of the things that got you standing here. Bob donated 390 hours of service in this past year in just one year, 390 hours of service. And George Anderson donated 220 hours of service for us. So just the hours themselves, but they come out and do the COP at least twice a week, but they're the people that when you pick up the phone and say, "In 10 minutes, I need this," they say, "Then I'll be there at 8:00 and I'll get it done in 10 minutes." It's just, it's so incredible when you have people that can do that. They, not only that, but they step up, you know, we're shorthanded, we've lost a few volunteers, some of them that are feeling well, and there's been some other things, and we're, our numbers aren't where we traditionally have them, which then, like anything, increases the workload for the other people. And these two have stepped up time and time again, no matter what the task, no matter what the project, it doesn't matter what you need, they just, they say, "I'll be there," and then they ask what they're doing. I mean, it's just really that nice. They do the house checks, they do the radar board out in the school zones. They've done Operation Now, Little League Opening Day, animal war service for the fallen officers, and we had the Twilight Santa Parade, Founder's Day, et cetera. And again, all of the volunteers are fantastic, and you can imagine how difficult it is for Beverly and for Linda to try to decide who, you know, who to pick, because honestly, you get to either one of them, but, you know, that would be tough. Defeat the purpose. Is that clear, son?
No, but we want to make a group shot of everybody.
You can do that. We'll probably do that. Do that out there, you want to do it here.
Right here, one more.
Okay. So anyway, that's what they've done. We really appreciate them, and we wanted everybody to just go here, what a great group of people we have. So, thank you again.
Before we just, we end, I'd just like to say, especially since this is controlled, in two weeks, I'll be out of job. And I know you have lights, but do you have sirens?
Is there anyone here tonight who has never been at a council meeting before who would
Okay, then I'll do it. Then you're in. Get them an application for a check.
Thank you. Come on up.
like to introduce themselves? Don, Gabe, no, okay. Thank you. Citizens' comments. I have one, Mr. Mulcay. Patrick. Okay. I'm sorry. All right, we'll continue with, if he comes in, we'll give him a pass and let him talk.
Councilman French, good evening.
Good evening. I'm ready to go to work.
Comments?
Not much. Let's see. Unfortunately, something came up last night and didn't make the, didn't make believe the city's up and down, so won't be able to comment on that, but just wrapping things up, getting ready for the transition.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to that. Thank you. Councilwoman Dean.
Just one unfortunate bit of news, I'm not sure if you're all aware, but Mrs. Murray, the principal of Surfside Elementary, her husband passed on Monday, so.
Thank you for that. Vice Mayor?
I want to thank the Satellite Beach Women's Club for an outstanding Founder's Day. It's a lot of work, planned most of the year for that, and went off really good, the music was good, we stayed to the bitter end and all the awards, and thank you for that.
Thank you. I only have, I have two comments. First, Founder's Day was terrific. Thank you. Weather, Carrie and her mom always do the weather, and it's terrific, and it's really good. So thank you for that and all the hard work. And I'd just like to say also congratulations to our chief of the firefighters, Don Hughes. Don, are you here? Don had a little article in the paper, actually a big article in the paper on November 3rd. He deployed north for Hurricane Sandy and did a heck of a job. You know what's going on up there, still going on. Many of us have family up in the northeast, and so, Don, I thank you very much for doing that and for helping out the United States of America. Thank you for that. Patrick, we couldn't find you, but we found you, so you're up. If you can state your name, and if you're a citizen, then you have five minutes, sir.
Patrick Mulcahy, yes, I am a citizen.
Thank you.
The reason I'm here this evening is the ongoing concerns that I have, possible solutions and multiple questions. But first, if it's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank the current council for the hard work they did, their honesty, their openness, their pursuit to promote the residents here of Satellite Beach to self-educate and basically do the mathematics, just like Bill Clinton said. The information was put out personally. I'm not impressed with the personal impacts on this current council. Totally uncalled for. Totally uncalled for. Dirty politics does nothing but conceal the issues. That's another reason I'm here this evening. So what I had done, I just had company, obviously, as why you couldn't find me, that was my grandson. I was preparing what I was going to be doing this evening. What I would like to do is carry on, and I do have a couple of questions in regards to the issues of dirty politics and possible prevention of them. Now, I spoke at previous meetings about fiduciary responsibilities. I've done a lot of research on that, and when I speak generally, doesn't mean I necessarily know what I'm talking about, but there's a basis behind it. I did research the duties of the city attorney and became familiar with them. With the indications, and especially the accusations on why our current council ran, they've been mailed out to all of us, is because they suspected corruption, and they wanted to come in, identify the problems, and do their best to correct them, which they did. When I look at the Beach Castor, and when I see things like this, I spoke of the red flags when we were dealing with the budget issues, and when I read a statement, and then I see it rocketed against statutes, that poses a problem to me. Because, call me old-fashioned, but you understand what I'm saying. And that brings us to the accountability, which I firmly believe that is what this council is looking for. Unfortunately, with the entire country, not just Satellite Beach, we have the ability of politicians to duck and evade any consequences because of the laws they have protecting them. In Satellite Beach, this similar, and I do have Ms. Samuelson's contract with me this evening. And with that, a clause under indemnification. Now, ironically, with all the research I've done in the ways this city government operates, this council depends solely on the honesty and the integrity in the information provided by them, provided to them by the department managers, and especially our city manager. If there is a break in that communication, how can this council work efficiently? How can they solve these problems, since it can't be done? In this, I heard a gentleman, and I spoke about this, threatening to sue this city. Anyone that sues this city sues the city, sues the taxpayers. In the clause in this contract, which is pretty standard, that unless there are intentional abuses, as a resident, what I have been seeing with the issues and the related issues I'm dealing with, the first words that come out of anyone's mouth, and this came to me from you, that these are civil matters. They neglect the criminal statutes, 100 percent. They place the burden on the victim, which is totally unrealistic, because the victim is the taxpayer that's paying them to send the taxpayer again in vicious circle. The situations that I personally have seen here in regards to the budget issues which were identified by this council, am I not correct? Funds being, I will use the word misappropriated based on my limited education. They were allocated for one purpose. A person of authority said, "That doesn't matter, we're going to do this anyway." And from what I read in the Beach Castor, unless I'm not correct, it's going to take us, the taxpayers, to pay 16 years' interest back. Now, along with the.
Is it five? Yes.
Five minutes, sir.
Wow.
Sorry. If there's agenda items that you can speak on tonight, you can also come up. And what I do, if you have a written statement that you'd like to leave with the city clerk, you can do that also on the other stuff that you'd like to say.
That was a quick five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney. Oh, Greg, I'm sorry, I left you out of City Council comments.
That's okay, I just felt like I was being left out.
Hey, no, you have anything on council comments?
No, I don't. Thank you very much, though, for asking.
Okay.
Actually, actually, it was, I do want to say it was a well-run election, and my congratulations to those folks who won and to those folks who didn't win. I thought it was a very well-run election all the way around. Congratulations to everybody in the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Drive safely. City Attorney report. Mr. Beadle, how are you? Nothing. Interim City Manager report, and good evening, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Thank you.
First up is the thank you letter that was written to the Police Department specifically for the services of Sergeant Sousa and Officer Volutski for helping to find a lost child and bring him home. He went out looking for his dog, and he got lost, and the officers did their due diligence, and the parents were very appreciative of that. There's also, second up is the monthly incident report. And of course, the agenda packet is also posted on the web so you can look at all of these items, but it gives the total calls for service, the traffic stops, and total arrests for the month of October. And congratulations to Chief Jeff Pearson. He was elected to the State Executive Board of Directors as the third vice president of the FBI National Academy Associates. This prestigious position will allow Jeff to help influence and to shape the highest level of executive police training in the country. And then, by being elected to this position, Chief Pearson will become the State Board President in 2016. So congratulations, Chief.
I guess we'll be getting those MDTs. Oh, no, I'm sorry, sorry. Congratulations. Terrific. Terrific.
Regarding the Recreation Department, the boat engine was found to have a one-inch hole in it, and it was repaired for $194, but it's been said that that repair will probably only last several months, so Carrie is still looking for a pontoon boat and motor, either used or new. And I guess she's also going to look regarding the FIND, which is the Florida inland navigational district, to see if there is a boat purchase possible under this grant program. So, and I guess that process actually begins in February 2013. At least we've got the boat moving to get to Sampson Island and do what needs to be done, at least temporarily. Also, with regard to the tropical snow vending, they had completed their revised contract for vending, and that was completed as of 9:30 2012, and the Rec Department will in fact repeat the RFP, the Request for Proposal process, again in February to obtain a vendor for Pelican from approximately March through September of 2013. And I did send a information, a couple of pieces of information, a couple of emails to council members regarding the beach erosion that we suffered during Hurricane Sandy. One of the emails that actually came from the county, the Natural Resources Department have submitted their numbers to the state, and that was effective October 29th, along with a request for a preliminary damage assessment from the state and from FEMA, and that's the first step in determining whether any federal assistance would be available as a result of the impacts of Hurricane Sandy. Also, Alan Potter, on the same date, October 29th, sent out a recap of some of the damage that we had sustained, and if any of you have been to the beach, I'm sure you've seen the shearing there. A couple of those locations have been, that were temporarily closed, are now, have been repaired. Park Avenue has been repaired, Cassia Boulevard has been repaired, and at Pelican Beach, both the north and the south access are open. High Tower, Scorpion, Ramada, and Grant Avenue, Grant they're working on, but the others have some serious damage and some serious drop-off at those locations. So, and the best estimate was $10,000 for the damage to the structures, not the erosion, but the, but the physical structures. On November 28th, from 9:00 AM until 12:00 noon, in council chambers will be the next round of the IAFF, that is, the firefighters' labor negotiations. So that is an open meeting, and that is from 9:00 to noon on November 28th. Also, we have, through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, they've received an award from the Department, U.S. Department of Justice, and they have allocated $1,543 to be used, we'll be able to use that in Satellite Beach for digital and audio recording in the booking room. I guess it was, it needed to be upgraded, so they're going to go ahead, I believe Lieutenant Barrios is going to go ahead and submit that grant by the 21st of November. Is that correct? So with council's approval, we'll move, consensus, we'll move forward on that. And there is no fiscal impact to the city as far as anything that the city would have to pay toward this. This is strictly a grant for that particular, those particular materials. And I do believe that that's all I have.
Can I have a motion to, for Lieutenant Barrios to move ahead with the grant?
I'd like to make the motion for Lieutenant Barrios to press forward with the, with the grant. Can I second the motion?
I have a motion by Councilman French, seconded by Vice Mayor Rhodes. A little more.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Mayor Bronte?
Yes, motion passing, unanimous, please. Lieutenant, thank you, sir, for doing that. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, agenda item number seven, this is a public hearing, ordinance number 1065, and Mr. Beadle.
Ordinance number 1065, and ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the FY 2011-2012 budget, ordinance number 1045. Set ordinance was previously amended by ordinance number 1053, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1065.
Thank you, Mr. Beadle. Ms. Hamilton.
Okay, I'm going to start out here, and Brenda, there are actually six sections to the, to this ordinance. Section one is, this is fiscal year 2011-2012, and this has to do, section one has to do with the general fund budget, which if you have, which I'm sure you don't, have your budget, adopted budget in front of you, but of course, again, that is also online. And what we're talking about here is it will be amended and it will be, to increase the general fund budget. So Brenda, take that away, please.
Hi, Brenda. Good evening.
Hi. Okay, that's on. If anybody has any questions on each section, the first section has to do with the general fund, increasing the budget. That was previously amended by ordinance 1053. This is just drawing up any additional fund items for the year.
So that is an open meeting, and that is from 9:00 to noon on November 28th. Also, we have, through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, they've received an award from the Department, US Department of Justice, and they have allocated $1,543 to be used, we'll be able to use that in Satellite Beach for digital and audio recording in the booking room. I guess it was, it needed to be upgraded. So they're going to go ahead, I believe Lieutenant Barrios is going to go ahead and submit that grant by the 21st of November, is that correct? So with council's approval, we'll move, consensus, we'll move forward on that. And there is no fiscal impact to the city as far as anything that the city would have to pay toward this. This is strictly a grant for that particular, those particular materials. And I do believe that that's all I have.
Can I have a motion to, for Lieutenant Barrios to move ahead with the grant?
I'd like to make the motion for Lieutenant Barrios to press forward with the grant. Can I second the motion?
I have a motion by Councilman French, seconded by Vice Mayor Rhodes, Lenore.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Mayor Bronte?
Yes, motion passed, as you may understand. Lieutenant, thank you, sir, for doing that. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, Agenda Item Number Seven, this is a public hearing, Ordinance Number 1065. And Mr. Beadle?
Ordinance Number 1065, and ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the FY 2011-2012 budget, Ordinance Number 1045. Said ordinance was previously amended by Ordinance Number 1053, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance Number 1065.
Thank you, Mr. Beadle. Ms. Hamilton?
Okay, I'm going to start out here, and Brenda, there are actually six sections to the, to this ordinance. Section one is, this is fiscal year 2011-2012. And this has to do, section one has to do with the general fund budget, which if you have, which I'm sure you don't, have your budget, adopted budget in front of you, but of course, again, that is also online. And what we're talking about here is it will be amended and it will be, to increase the general fund budget. So Brenda, take that away, please.
Hi, Brenda, good evening.
Hi. Okay, that's on. If anybody has any questions on each section, the first section has to do with the general fund, increasing the budget. That was previously amended by Ordinance 1053. This is just drawing up any additional fund items for the year.
What, Brenda, what is the designated fund balance? Third line from the bottom, under general fund revenue?
That's the use of fund balance for the fiscal year of 182,285.
What do you use it for?
For the, that is offsetting the expenses that are being used for the year.
So you're not going to see the line item, 182, you're going to see separate line items?
All of the revenues that are here, that have been adjusted, are offset by the adjustment of all the expenditures that have been increased over the last year by the 393,000. We have to use fund balance of 185,000 for last year.
Okay. So we, did that revenue come out of, like, our reserves, or where did it?
Correct.
Okay, so we, we had to pull 182, 285 out of our reserves for FY 11, FY 12?
Correct.
Okay. The ad valorem tax line of minus 135,000, or negative, that is a loss of ad valorem tax revenue?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. The first line where it says ad valorem tax current, it shows a loss of 135K?
Yes.
That happened because of?
We did not, we see all of the ad valorem that we had expected. So the delinquent taxes, we have received more than expected because the prior years, we are collecting more, and I guess people are losing their homes or are not paying the current taxes, but the tax collector are, I guess, are receiving delinquent taxes from prior years with interest, and we're receiving those funds.
Okay. Building permits, another revenue loss of 35K, is that, that seems like an awful lot for building permits.
We did not need the projections.
So we missed our projection by 35,000 for building permits?
Correct.
Is that an unusual figure?
For last year, yes. It's normally not off that much.
Okay. Also, I noticed electricity franchise fees, we lost 25K, or we didn't bring in 25K that we thought we were going to bring in. Is that an unusual?
Yes.
Figure, why, what would you attribute that to?
I have no idea. I could, I could contact the electric company and find out if they'd like a response.
Well, I suppose if people are more energy efficient, then perhaps.
Could be. I could, I could get a response from them directly, if you'd like me to have something back by next meeting.
They charge us the smart boxes or anything? You know, when they came around and they installed all the smart boxes, the electric company, is that, is this FPL?
Yeah, this is franchise fees that we receive, so.
That's electricity, the way being used.
What was the $19,913 grant that we received?
That's Fire Department's gear. They have received the grant.
Gear?
On their gear, on the Fire Department's gear. And you will see corresponding increase in the Fire Department's uniforms, line item, for the change amount. So that was a loss, a zero.
And under expenses, when I see a negative expense, is that income? In other words, I'm looking at life, health, dental, and eye benefits, the third line from the top on page two, it's showing a negative 15,000.
That was a decrease in that line item?
So, so it cost us less than what we projected? Okay, that's, that's right. I noticed that we had significant increases in retirement contributions. The fourth line from the top, also retirement contributions for police, retirement contributions for fire, that, those were pretty big numbers. Was that because of the stock market, or, I mean, how, we're looking at 65K for regular retirement contributions, 134K for police, 153K for fire?
That had to do with the 175, 185.
And what was, when you say that, it had to do with?
Remember the big deltas that we saw this year? That's, that's the deltas, because of the way the budget was construed in 11, 12, but 12 and 13, it's those, they're not the order.
That is correct.
Okay.
It's pass-through money, and the way, the way that we handled it then is different than the way that it's being handled in 12 and 13.
Correct.
So the pass-through money wasn't included then, so, and then the pass-through money, I guess that's what it called, for 134.3 came in. So, it's, what's that?
The actual revenues are on the front of the page.
Right.
Which is the fourth and fifth item down.
Five and eighty.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the amount for the 65,000 was the retirement contribution, on the second page was the buyout agreement from the contract to Mr. Carty. So that's all that was. It wasn't an increase or anything, so that's all that was.
You, you will not see this again next year?
No, 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 so that, that's all that was.
And I think it's important to, to point out, too, that this is a budget comparison with the year-end actuals, is that correct, Brenda?
Yeah.
And I think that's an important, you know, just to, to make sure that the public understands that, too, that that's what this is, it's really a reconciliation, and that's what I would say. You might use a different term, but you're comparing the, the budget with the year-end
While Lloyd's looking, Cheryl?
Yes, I do have one comment, and that's regarding community redevelopment, yet again. Only the Community Redevelopment Agency on page four can amend their budget or adopt a budget via resolution, so I have concerns about this yet again. I think what you're going to find is the external auditors are going to find us non-compliant for not amending our own budget, or the CRA amending their own budget.
Now, this is 11, 12.
Right.
Is our own budget 12 and 13?
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. You should still adopt and amend your own budget as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
This is, this was originally done by an ordinance, we are amending the final.
I completely understand, but I just wanted to let you know that I think you're going to be non-compliant when it comes to the external audit.
I don't know if they're going to, if they're going to look at those separate.
With 60 days.
11, 12. They are going to start looking at them separate for 12 and 13, because that's going to separate the budget, but 11 and 12.
It doesn't matter, we should have always separated the budget. I'm not, I really don't want to argue about this anymore, I want to know the record.
Well, let's not argue.
And I've also talked to the Auditor General today about it. And just so you know, that, the Community Rede-
Auditor General?
The Auditor General.
Why is that?
Just to find out if that's the way it should be done, and it should be done that way.
See the?
Not the actual Auditor General, but a staff member of the Auditor General.
Are they the next in line?
No, that our external auditor is, but that's the process that needs to be followed by the CRA.
Auditor General is not the process.
Our external auditor will review this next.
Did you speak to Chad Williams?
I did not speak to Chad Williams.
Why, why are you going?
Because the staff doesn't listen, Mr. Mayor, that's why. I've been over this over and over and over again.
No, 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 the staff listens. I, I think that you are doing things that have not been approved by this council. You cannot.
Regardless of?
Well, I don't, you know, you can say that, but you should not continue to send things to the Auditor General.
I didn't send anything to the Auditor General. The Auditor General attended the FRA conference.
Okay, you said.
And reconfirmed exactly what I've been telling this staff all along, is that the CRA must adopt their own budget and do their own budget amendment, yet we continually, I don't want to fight with anybody.
No, but I mean, if you want to fight the CRA battle with Tallahassee, I, I think that it would be nice of you included us in that.
I think I've been trying to include you all along by saying to separate the CRA budget and the amendments out of the, out of the city process.
I think, I think, I think you are.
And with that said, I'm not going to vote on this budget the way this.
Okay, that's fine, you don't have to vote on it, but I, you should not go against and over council's procedures. And I will tell you that, and people have been censured for that. And I am tired, you said it at the CRA board, you said it tonight, I mean, if you want to call Tallahassee every time that you don't like something here, that is wrong.
I don't want to call Tallahassee every time I hear, but when I bring it to the City Manager and I bring it to the Finance Director and no one takes note or listens, what else am I supposed to do?
I, I think you should maybe trust the staff. I mean, that's what I think. I think you should trust the staff. I mean, that makes me sick, that everything that we do is aired in Tallahassee. It makes me sick, we are a city that handles everything ourselves, and you are just, it's not right. If you don't trust the staff, let's talk about that, but I trust the staff, and I like the staff. Where's Brenda?
I can, I can start with section two, come on, Brenda. Section two, again, fiscal year 2011-2012, this is the Community Services Special Revenue Fund Budget, and this essentially, we're talking about revenue sources, state and federal grants, donations, user fees, and transfers from the general fund. There was a third quarter amendment on this, I believe, Brenda?
Yes.
In the amount of 149, so there was 149, 7, I don't know, 759, there we go. And now we're looking at the fourth quarter amendment to that, of $10,650.
All right, Brenda, could you have a seat, please? At this time, I'd like to open this ordinance to public comment. I didn't, I didn't see your hand go up, but I thought I'd see it go up.
Ron Trigudis, resident, Satellite Beach. I have seen, first of all, I'm looking at the suggesting entry, and it's.
Which, which one you want, Ron?
The whole, the whole thing, the whole project. And I understand this process, a year-end to amend the budget. I've been through these, I think, twice now, and the prior year, I was not happy with how it was presented. This is a lot of information to gather and absorb, especially if you're, if you're not even versed in accounting. But nonetheless, people are walking through this right now at this point. The Community Development Agency Fund, I do believe, needs to be looked at separately, but that's a matter that needs to be looked at carefully going forward. And I attended the CRA conference in Daytona Beach on my own dime, and I did see up there a lot of officials in various departments and various agencies who are looking to help CRAs with the various issues that are coming forward, including the Governor's Commission of reviewing economic development plans, and also including CRAs. And they are open to discussion to give them a call prior to things happening. So what I'm saying is, if you do have questions on the CRA, you should contact. The Auditor General was there, the League of Cities was there, there were people from the federal government there, and they're all open for discussion. They pointed out the do's and don'ts, and the whys and why-nots, and how-tos, and they are available for comment, and they're also talking about 163, so I have to stop that at this point, that's for another discussion, just to let you know. They are open to work with people. I have a handout that hopefully can be followed next year by the Finance Department to help them portray the message here on this budget adjustment, and also for everyone to understand as far as transparency. So I'm going to hand it out right now. And basically, what I'm laying out over here is, I'm looking at our budget format, and I don't think this would take too long and too, too much effort from the staff to do it, but to lay out the actual fiscal, fiscal year for 2010, 11, adopted budget 2011, 2012, and then we put in the budget amendments in another column, and we have our final amended And I think this would help us all for next year's budget process, so we, we see this, and that's all I'm asking for, thank you.
Thanks, and thanks for going to that CRA conference. Oh, the public comment.
Counselor, I'd be ashamed of yourself to be open and transparent.
Introduce yourself, sir, and you have to address the Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Patrick Mulkey, I'm a resident, and I would like to, again, scold that councilwoman for wanting to be open and transparent. And to put your mind at ease, a number of the issues that I've been addressed, including my personal concerns, you can verify this without Police Chief, I have filed a complaint with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, and also forged copies to the FBI. So hopefully, some of these matters will get resolved.
Oh, the public comment. Okay, let me bring it back to the council for a motion. Is, is Greg with us again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, I'm here, Mayor.
Thank you. We are ready to look at ordinance, did you have any comment, Greg? I'm sorry, I heard that you had dropped off, and now you're back. Any comment on this?
No, I just caught the end, I believe it was Mr. Trigudis's discussion, and I concur with, with the, with the concepts that he brought forward, especially how it could help future budgets, but that's all I got.
Thank you. 1065, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance Number 1065 on first reading.
Is there a second?
We haven't finished all the sections yet, that was just section one, so.
Yeah, we haven't finished.
Okay, so I thought that we, we were, we went right to the CRA section. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, and I, and I actually jumped the gun because I was looking at section two, talking about the Community Services Special Revenue.
I thought it was a wrap, but go ahead.
Any questions on section two?
None on section two.
Anybody on section two? Section three.
Just to mention, though, the ALS is Advanced Life Support, if anyone had a question as to what that designation was. Okay, section three is the Stormwater Utility Fund, and there is a decrease in the Stormwater Utility Fund Budget for fiscal year 11, 12, a decrease of 83,721. Section four? Section four, fiscal year 2011-2012, the Law Enforcement Trust Fund Budget, and this is increased to 5,850 in the fourth quarter. An increase in confiscated property.
What, confiscate?
Oh.
Okay, section five, this is the Community Redevelopment Agency Fund Budget, and that is increased to 938,245.
What?
An additional 20,819 to increase it to that amount.
Great.
And there was also a resolution, if you remember, on 9/27, I believe we had a special meeting then, and there was a modification, a decrease of 543,575, which the CRA board approved. So this fourth quarter, we're looking at 20,819 increase.
The paper that's on the diap that's 30,802, which one is correct?
Oh, this is the new one, I'm looking at the old one. That was the only modification.
The CGA sent that last bill.
Yeah, that's right, that was the last bill from CGA, which was an additional 4,000 and some dollars, so.
Just to be clear, what you're saying here on this is that the CRA should have the first look at this before it comes into ours, or it should be completely separate?
Completely separate. We can include it in our budget document, but the City Council does not approve it. The CRA plus, the City Council plus two approves it.
How would we capture that in one document so, I mean, people don't have to look two places to see the fund?
Well, it goes into the budget, it's incorporated into the budget, but it's not approved by the City Council, it's approved by the Community Redevelopment Agency.
And that is in place for fiscal year 12, 13.
I was curious, do you have any issues with, with the, the numbers themselves at the C?
Process.
Okay, okay.
Okay, section six?
I had a question on six.
Okay.
The DOE Muni Building Energy Update GT, is that a grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I noticed that the grant revenue is 110, but the expenditure was 125. I assume we had a matching?
Yeah.
Okay, 15K matching?
Yes, and that's, that was for the civic center.
Okay. And the efficiency study?
We'll be decreasing that, we, we like that a lot.
Okay, so because we never had to pay anything? Okay.
And that was the Capital Asset Fund Budget for those here, that was increased. And that's it?
Great, I have, I. Since, since I only did number one, I, I got the other ones on the table, Don, you can come up and speak for a minute.
Don McBundin, resident. I'm trying to say this without pointing fingers, I don't think this is the appropriate form to have city employees chastised or attacked. There is a process of a city manager, that all city employees work under her authority, city manager works under the authority of the mayor and council. I think it's a well-established procedure that these issues can be handled, rather than in a form such as this. I think that should that procedure break down, I always expect that breakdown would be my opinion at the city manager level at that point, I think that calls for a council or mayor to get involved and to resolve the issue, but I think that this public forum is not the proper forum for that.
Thank you. Public comments on this ordinance? All right, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Rhodes, I do not have a second. Okay, if we do not, if we're lacking a second, this has to be done by 30 November, I'd like the council to pick a date when they would like to meet, and they have to have a two-week hearing, and that could be the 15th or the 16th. And I'm not sure what the, what the hangup is for a second, but it's.
It would have to be the 16th, sir, because you got a 24-hour notice.
Okay, it'd have to be the 16th. We have two weeks left, if you don't do it, then, so we'll have to meet on the 16th, and you, you'll have to make comments, if there's no second, what are the comments that you need to see changed? This is 2011, 12 budget done by Bill Higginson, Mike Chase, Jeff Lees, myself, and Scott.
Well, I, I.
We need to, we need to give direction to the staff, and we need to meet on the 16th. And then transition will not, could take place on the 28th, but we need to read it, have a second reading of this within 14 days, and that would be, have to be the 30th of November, otherwise, we will be sanctioned by Tallahassee.
Well, I think the more appropriate way to do it would be to remove section five, and just hold a CRA meeting and approve that separately.
Okay, is, okay, so you want to remove section five. Is that the hangup with Lloyd and Greg? Greg, is that your hangup?
Yeah, we need to, I think we need to separate them, that's my only hangup.
In 11 and 12? I mean, do you want to separate it in 11 and 12? Or 12 and 13? See, that's what I don't understand, this budget was made in, in 11 and 12 as one contingent.
Can I make a suggestion? Could I suggest that you adopt this on first reading as it is, and either I or Ann will contact whoever we need to contact, confirm that this is inappropriate to do this, the way that it's presently presented, and if it is in fact that way, then we'll excise it out, and then we'll have a special meeting for the CRA board, and we'll adopt it on second reading without section five. That's just a suggestion to get it read on first reading for tonight. It's up to council.
Okay, the other, the other thing, Jim, could you take out section five?
Take it out tonight, you can't put it back in. You can't put it back in.
Okay. My, my main concern is I just want to make sure we're doing this right. I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to leave here with any, any question in my mind that we did something that was, that, that could come back and, and cause problems for the next council.
And I also want to say, and I have sent emails, I have followed up on this, I have explained this, we have talked, talked to this about our consultant, this is not a new issue. And it doesn't matter whether we made a motion to separate next year's budget, it's still an issue somewhere along the way, you have to do it the proper way, and I've said it all along, it needs to be separated, and, and that's right, it should be done.
Okay, so, we have something on the table, a recommendation by Mr. Beadle, first reading tonight, and then E guarantees on the 28th, we will have, probably before then, so that the CRA can meet ahead of time too. The CRA will need to meet to, to give it their blessing.
Well, the CRA theoretically could meet, I guess, before the second reading, and have, have Ed and Mr. Allison come in and meet as part of that board before this, the 28th meeting. Okay? Couple things, counsel, in front of you.
Jim, you, you, you'll contact?
Yeah, I mean, I'll do, I'll, you know, I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna, I'm still gonna contact our auditor, and then I'm gonna contact, I guess I'll contact the Auditor General's office to find out what their position is on it, based on how we've done it up till now. And I can, as soon as I talk to them, I'll email everybody and let everybody know what, what I found out.
Okay.
Because it's not a big deal to take it out, we can't put it back in, Mr. Mike. That's what my concern is, is by taking it out, we can't fix it now.
I'll tell you what, why don't we table this until the end of the meeting? Want to table it? I mean, table means you just, you handle it at the meeting, the next item, we'll do it at the end. I mean, we have to discuss it, and we have to either say, you have a couple minutes to think about it. Okay? All right, Jim, we're gonna table it to the end of the meeting, let's look at agenda item number eight, is that okay? Okay, resolution number, agenda item number eight, resolution number 922, Mr. Beadle.
Resolution number 922, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the City of Satellite Beach Money Purchase Plan as required by legislative and regulatory changes, providing an effective day. Right, caution.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beadle, Ann?
This really is a, is a requirement from Nationwide Insurance regarding the 401A, and this was a requirement from the IRS, and that's what we've got here.
Requirement from the IRS?
From Exhibit A is, is what had to be filled out regarding the 401A plan, and this was a requirement from the IRS, and so Nationwide has asked us to, to adopt this because it's a requirement by law, is that correct, Brenda?
Yes, it is.
Okay, let me bring it back to the council for any comments.
It's required by the IRS, you do it.
Any public comment on resolution number 922?
Ron Trigudis, resident Satellite Beach. I guess this, this is a document sent over to the IRS that reflects how our plan is outlined to begin with.
What was the last, our, our plan is outlined?
This is a reflection of our current plan, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, so when I go to 21, for compensation, it basically shows on the first part of it, wages, tips, and other compensation on Form W2, and this conforms with the plan, correct?
Brenda?
Oh, sorry.
Have you, I, I have some questions on the reservation on this form.
Yes.
Can you open to number 21 on this form? Do you have it?
Oh, I don't have it.
Here, here, Brenda.
Okay, go ahead, Ron, you want to?
Number 21, first part, compensation, plan section 1.11, wages, tips, and other compensation on Form W2.
Correct.
Okay, and then I go to the other section, adjustments to compensation, and I'm a little unclear on this, H is marked, and H.1 is marked, compensation shall be adjusted by, including compensation which is not currently included, inclutable in the participant's gross income by reason of the application of Code Section 125 Cafeteria Plan, 132 F4 Qualified Transportation Fringe, on and on and on, I'm not going to read the rest of it at this point. Again, I'm asking, our, this is a reflection, this statement to the IRS is a reflection of our current plan as it stands, as it has been for the last couple of years.
Yes.
Okay?
What's your question?
That is the question, this conforms to our plan.
Yes.
Okay?
And you're saying that we are not going to include section 125 in the wages, which is not.
That is an adjustment, a downward adjustment or an upward, it's a little clear in this state, unclear in this, this section.
And you know what section 125 is?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And then what about Qualified Transportation Fringe? That's excluded also from the pension obligation?
Well, we don't have that.
Then we do not have employer pickup contribution under a government, a government plan, correct?
No, 401A.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this resolution? Okay, let me bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 922 as required by Internal Revenue Service.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Rhodes, second by Councilwoman Dean, any other discussion? Lenore?
Councilmember Bellman?
Yes.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes, and motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 923, I am going to defer to the city clerk, this is accepting and approving the results of the November 6th city election. Lenore?
I talked with the supervisor of elections yesterday, and they have to wait for federal recount, so we will not get anything sent to us no earlier than the 19th. So it's my recommendation that you wait to get the certified results and schedule a special meeting on the 26th. By then, you'll have all of the information accurately from the supervisor of elections.
Yeah, we were thinking that was going to happen, because they have 12 days after the.
Technically, they have till the 16th, but because of the federal, the way they explained it, they would be sending out after the double count on votes.
Okay, so we, by the way, the charter says that we need to certify the votes at one meeting, and then the next meeting, we can have the transition. So we cannot do it all in the same night on the 28th, so we'll have to do it at some time before then, and we may not have it until 19th, rather than, so we'll have to schedule a meeting on the 26th of November. Is council okay with that? And please pick a time. I, I will say that I will not be here on the 26th.
The only other day would be the 21st, but you're, you know.
No, we, the day before Thanksgiving is, we've already decided it, although we only need five minutes, but still, you need time. Can the council come up with a time on the 26th to meet?
It's the same thing, 6 o'clock.
Okay, 6 o'clock, 26, probably five minutes, just to sort of follow this. Five minutes. Okay, sorry about that, usually in, in past years, they've been in, but it's been the big election, a lot of contention.
What we could do to simplify this is just hold a special meeting at the beginning of the meetings on the 28th, and then have the chairman and the regular members on.
That's good, thank you.
I, I like that idea, it's better.
Okay, thank you. Greg, is that okay? We'll have a special meeting, probably 5:45 on the 28th, and then close that meeting, and then go into the next one. Thank you, thank you, staff. Is that okay? Okay, Lenore?
You didn't write, so I've got it for November 28th at 5:45.
Okay, we'll do that, thank you. Sorry about that. Agenda item number 10, update. Agenda item number ten, update on grant writer RFP.
Correct. This is for, this is informational only, and this is a review of the six, six, uh, proposals that we did receive. And I tried to break this out in a bit of a spreadsheet here, just to give an idea of the companies', uh, the information when they were established, and to detail their cost pricing package. And that's what we've got there. Again, this is informational only, and if you had any question on what piggybacking, um, or, uh...
Layering.
Layering are. The layering slash patchwork, which actually are similar terms, are analogous terms, are essentially, um, the idea that if you were to get a grant that was eighty-twenty, you might be able, and twenty percent would then be the responsibility of the city. It's my understanding that you might be able to find other grants that would also, uh, be grants for a portion of that twenty percent, so maybe you could get it down to five percent of what the city might want to pay. So not all of these firms, uh, were, had indicated that they were knowledgeable about that. And again, there's the piggybacking, and that's a little more complicated for me, but, for example, Orlando, if, and, and actually, may I, may I ask someone to explain that from the audience who is here, and she knows that if you want to know what the piggybacking is, because essentially, it's, it's, it's utilizing, um, a grant that's already in existence, if I understand, is that correct? And so that, and it, I guess that may bring down the pricing on that or the cost of that? Is that pretty much it? Okay. So that's it, is it, from a person who doesn't know, uh, a great deal about the structures of grants? So there are some ways to bring down the cost, uh, of the, the grant writing cost to the city, and those are two, by layering or piggybacking.
Okay. And this is information only?
Correct.
Does the present council want to do anything on these names?
Would anyone want to got a package, an additional package?
That is not on, uh...
No. In fact, is if anyone would like to look at any of the proposals, they're more than welcome. I do have them, uh, so if anyone wants to take it.
I definitely think this is something that you should, uh, put on agenda item for five December, uh, or, uh, work it out with...
Right. And we had talked about that, but I at least wanted to report that we did get the six proposals in, and, um...
We approved, because I, I think that, that the new council should definitely get involved in, uh, in the whole grant process.
Right. And you and I had discussed that, so...
Yeah. So let's just push this, and you can work it with, uh, with Frank Catino if he wants it on the fifth, if that's not busy, or the nineteenth of December.
Right. And any, uh, council members or incoming council and mayor, if they want to look at any of the proposals, they're, they're welcome to do so.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item number eleven, report on permanent city manager screening committee recommendations. Is there, is Amy going to do this, or is somebody from the committee going to do it, or are you going to do it?
Lenore was in charge of this. I was not involved in this.
I, I can say something.
Um, Amy is not available. You do have Mr. McLunden and, um...
Well, let me, let me, uh...
Yes, and Mr. Bailey is also present, if you...
Brad, would you like to say something on this, or I, I can, I can take it, and, and I know what we need to say, but would you like to say something on the committee's recommendations, sir?
He's the vice chair.
Yeah, he's the vice chair.
I'm sorry. I think they should...
You guys might, uh...
I'm the chair.
Why don't you come up and say it, and I'll, and I'll say something afterwards?
Okay?
Tom McLunden, the president, vice chair of the...
The price of power gone.
Permanent city manager application and bonding committee. I was not aware that the chair was not going to be here tonight. I was not made aware of that. Three of the committee members are in attendance, uh, former Mayor Shuckster, Fred Bailey, and myself. Trevor Loewing was the other committee member, and I, I didn't see him here tonight. This, the committee was tasked by council, and mayor, to do a city manager search. One, um, one committee member was appointed by each councilman and one by the mayor. And, um, based on that, I think, uh, we, we did a commendable job, given the time we had and the resources. There were scheduling conflicts, there were problems during the budget process, um, short deadline to meet, but nevertheless, uh, this committee did work hard and diligently. We put together the application and the prospectus of the city, um, in a professional manner. That was actually, it made it nationwide. We had applicants, our candidates, apply from across the country, from California, Maine, Florida, across South, Midwest, Wyoming. It wasn't just a local search. Number of candidates, I think I said, we received sixty-six candidates by the deadline, which, based on my research, was a very similar number by maybe one or two than what a professional head-hunting, uh, firm would have, uh, received. We did, like I say, we did the best we could with the tools and time we had, uh, resources, tools being, um, Google, uh, if we're looking at these people, looking at experience, looking at, um, the criteria that was approved by council. On the first, uh, shortlist, the committee, uh, that was agreed by the committee that any candidate that had received, uh, at least three submissions from committee members would automatically flow over to a shortlist. We did have one candidate who received five. A review of the, um, the candidates and the way the members submitted the, um, the candidates to the committee, um, was, if you review it, it was, um, unbiased. This was done in a, a political manner. Every effort was made to be totally transparent, and, um, that being given, uh, the first go-around, we, we did have, um, four candidates that, uh, that made the first shortlist. Council had it tasked, the committee, with presenting ten candidates. By the time we whittled down through the sixty-six resumes, we had a total of twelve. It was decided at that point that, uh, further discussion, uh, would not be that fruitful, so we decided that we would submit twelve, uh, applicants to council. There rose a question about the experience, uh, criteria of one of the candidates. The committee discussed that, the chair came up with a solution of how to handle that. Three committee members had, um, submitted that candidate based on experience. The solution was, uh, that that particular candidate would be submitted to council as an addendum item. That being said, uh, I would, uh, like to commend the committee for the job that they did under, uh, the circumstances. We did the best we could as citizens. Of course, like you guys, we, we, we got heat, uh, not unexpectedly. So I think, uh, in the end, we did the best we could. So with the candidates that we submitted, uh, it was also stated that, here they are. It's up to the council, this council, next council, do what you may. This is what we came up with. You're welcome to, to accept them all, throw them all out, start the whole process over. We have no problem with that. It's, uh, up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Thank you for the committee. Fred, would you like to say something? And, uh, mayor, would you like to... Hector, if you'd like to say something also, as a member of the committee, you're welcome to.
Fred Bailey, Satellite Beach resident. It was, it was indeed an honor to be a part of this process, because it was very interesting, reading sixty-six applications is no easy feat. And, uh, and all of the people on the committee spent a lot of time looking at all of the applications, analyzing them, and, uh, and making the best recommendations we could. The process was totally fair, and that's what I really, I'm, I'm proud of that. It was a very fair process, the way developed, and, uh, and, uh, I wanted to point out that of the sixty-six applications, unfortunately, nineteen of them were not qualified based on the, on the, on the education requirement. All of these submitted resumes, they didn't have a master's degree. So anyway, everything that Don said, I think I agree with. It was, uh, we, uh, had a very, uh, good committee.
Thank you very much, Fred. Mayor Shakti, would you like to say something, sir?
I, I know you, well, third member of the committee. David Shakti, sixty-five, six hundred and forty. The committee didn't work well together. We, we agreed on the criteria. I think it was a screening process, it wasn't really a selection process. I think we agreed, we screened them and gave you a list of, of twelve people who may be qualified to do it, and I think that just our judgment, like Fred said, there are a number of them that we questioned their eligibility based on the criteria. We each had different interpretations on that criteria, hence why the lists were a little bit different. But I think we all communicated and talked about it, and I think the, uh, the compromise on the one candidate was a good one, and, uh, so it's pretty in your hand, getting back, looking at everybody you want. This is what our process came up with.
Thank you, and thank the committee, uh, the members. All right. I have, uh, I just wanted to pass along something. I've talked and, I've talked and, uh, spoken with, uh, Mayor Lex Catino, and he has asked a package, and each of the, uh, council members, plus the council member elects, have a package in front of them of the twelve, uh, nominees or candidates. As one of his first agenda items on the twenty-eighth of November, uh, Frank would like to create a shortlist. So, Lorraine, Mark, Greg, Cheryl, Frank, you have homework in the next two weeks, because one of the items, is that right, Frank? If I'm not, if I'm, I'm saying, you want to create the shortlist on the twenty-eighth because you need to get the ball rolling, because the eighteenth of December is coming quickly.
One hundred and eighty days, that's our twenty-eighteenth.
Which is eighteenth. So you will create the shortlist on, on that day, so that is the, the twenty-eighth, and I think it's built into the schedule. Okay? And you, you should have, you each should have a package. Hey, Greg, you have a package here that I don't know if you want to come...
Dropped out.
Oh. Okay. He's not. Okay. So we'll just make sure that we give him a call. We don't need it. It's, it's okay. But just make sure that he gets a package, so he can do the homework on that. Cheryl, is that okay? Okay. Thank you. All right. Frank, anything else? Is that good? Okay. So that, uh, we'll save that for that day. Okay. All right. I have, uh, tabled something. We need to go back to the table before we discuss. We only have two agenda items left, and that is next regular council meeting and adoption of minutes. We need to go back to agenda item number seven, uh, discuss this, uh... Who's that?
Contact them.
Okay. Agenda item number seven, ten sixty-five, has been tabled, uh, bring it off the table, to see how we want to work this. Drop that date to get this done is thirty November, and we have to have two readings. So that's, that's the only thing. Mr. Beadle has made a suggestion. First reading to approve, and then he will do homework and, uh, get back to us soon. Or we can, uh, we, uh, I don't know. We can wait till the sixteenth. Do it on the sixteenth. And the thirtieth. So, uh, discussion.
Well, I prefer not to have additional meetings if we don't need to have them.
I, uh, do you feel, uh, I want you to feel confident that if we approve it on first reading, that you will get a solution by the second reading? I don't want you to think that, that we're just going to push something over us.
No, I just, I want to make sure that the, our external auditor and also the contact is...
Okay. And, Mr. Beadle?
Contacted, just to make sure, that we're doing it properly.
Paying him for it. I mean, he says that's, I mean, it's...
I just don't want to end up with a, a non-compliance issue.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, I think he makes a good point. We could, uh, we could do it on first reading, and it will be resolved on second reading.
On the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
By the new council?
No, by the old council.
Old council.
Old council will do it. That will be our last, we do the first and the second reading.
And then if, if the CRA, uh, information is pulled out, I assume that there'll be a short CRA meeting before that meeting. Am I correct? There'll be a special meeting for the election results.
I'll find out from a procedural standpoint, what they recommend for how to deal with the CRA aspect of it. You could even have a CRA meeting on the twenty-eighth at five. Since all of us are going to be here anyway, I mean, you know, we could do that. I mean, there'll be five of us here, and then we'll get Ed and Dave.
I mean, that would work better than the sixteenth or whatever.
Yeah. So do I have a second? Probably need to read first.
Read first?
Okay.
Same way, approve ordinance, uh, make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, number ten sixty-five on first reading? Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Rhodes, seconded by Councilman French Lenore.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman French?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Ponte?
Yes. And the motion passes unanimously. I thank the council for working through that, and I thank you for your thoughtful concern on that, and members, uh, of the city. Thank you. Agenda item number twelve is next regular council meeting, uh, which is twenty-eighth. This is a little tricky. We're going to have it in here. We were thinking about having it across, like, last year, there were a lot of people, but there's going to be some work that needs to be done. So at five forty-five, we're going to meet to certify the election, and then at six o'clock, the council, uh, as presented, will meet, and, uh, uh, we have to do a second reading. There's some awards to be given out. I ask Frank, he, he would rather I give them out, but it should only be about fifteen or twenty minutes. And also, uh, council comments, uh, that, and then, uh, we will have swearing-ins. I think, uh, Frank, uh, Mayor Shakti will swear in Frank, Mark, Pat Mutec, and Lorraine. I don't know who is going to swear in, uh, Mark. Then we'll have swearing-in. The new council will take over, and some of the things, I know that, uh, Mayor Catino, Frank wants to do also that night, the liaisons you want to be on. The committees, you know, what meetings you want to go to, if, uh, Florida, who wants to be on beaches and shores, because he, he wants to do both of those things on the twenty-eighth, and I think that's about it. There may be one other thing on, on right-of-ways. Do you have something on right-of-ways?
I think, yes. The volunteer coordinator, special events coordinator, was going to give a very brief report, that what she's been working on, so...
And the reason that is, we gave the volunteer coordinator forty-five days to get back to us. That is crunch time.
Yes.
Okay. So, and, and that's it. So that meeting shouldn't be that long, but it should be, uh, intense. Also, a selection of a vice mayor at that meeting.
That's right.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make one comment, please?
Yes. You may.
I just need to make this one comment, and I'm sorry to take up your time. This has been needed to be brought up. When the KPEG, um, group had gotten together, all the department heads were assured that any member of KPEG that was assigned to each department, um, and was brought into our departments, or was privy to any information, and given free rein to our departments, that information would not be used to... information would not be used against us. However, it seems as if that information is being used against us, or at least my department and City Hall, um, since one individual on KPEG, um, has learned of the information in City Hall, that person has been demanding from the podium, or his friends on council, more and more work of finance, and like, um, tonight's meeting, wanting more and more different ways of finance to provide documentation, and the number of hours, I'm kind of parched right now, but the number of hours that I put in finance, and now I have to submit more documents and change the way I prevent, present information, is very insulting to me. I put in a lot of hours, my staff cannot put in any more hours, because the budget is not there for them to put in overtime or comp time. So I have to put in the hours. The other night, I was here 24 hours, well, actually, 30-some hours straight, working. I had to go home, because I had a migraine, otherwise I would have worked the next full day. I do this all the time. I love working for the city, I love the employees here, they are fabulous employees. I love working for the city, I love my job, I really do, but it is insulting when this person who knows we are short-staffed in finance, we are overworked in finance, and, and he knows how backed up we are. They, he knows it. I'm, I'm not upset, I'm just, I'm stating fact, this is fact. The city's clerk's office, she is overworked, she works every night and every weekend. She was hot, she was told to hire a full-time deputy city clerk. I have the minutes of when, of when December 7th, 2011, council voted, voted to allow her to hire a full-time deputy city clerk. It was advertised for a full-time deputy city clerk. She is now tasked with two permanent part-time employees, but yet, it goes unfulfilled. They know how overworked we are, but yet, we cannot spend any money, so, so salaried employees have to make up the difference. She is working constantly, we get, we see each other, we know how many hours we put in. So it's so insulting to come up with that piece of paper, and then hear a council member, his friend, "Oh, yes, let's do that." So now, between 2:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the morning, since I can't sleep and she can't sleep, I might as well just come in here and get the work done. You know, I'm not ranting and raving this, I'm stating fact, I'm stating fact. And it, it's just very upsetting to me. And Ms. Deanen, Deanen, do you have a check for Krati's sign? Do you have it with you? Or should I send staff over to pick up the check tomorrow?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is out of line.
Brenda, 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 please.
I was on vacation, Brenda, if you need to know, until yesterday.
So, anyway, and the other, the $1,000, I don't know where council would like that to come from. They had said that the $1,000 is appropriated, but they didn't say where it would come from. I looked in the minutes, um, and they said that, you know, it's appropriated, but they didn't say what line item and what budget.
I think it should have been done in the budget, Brenda, thank you. You know, some of that stuff, please, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted that on the record.
I understand.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. All right, I, thank you. Okay, the next regular council meeting is scheduled for two weeks from tonight on the 28th, I think we just said that, and that'll be transition. Adoption of minutes, agenda item number 13.
Mayor Ponte, can I just clarify though, because you're talking about next agenda items, I wanted to clarify the times for each meeting, if you've figured that.
Yes, yes, uh, 5:45,
For the special meeting?
For the special meeting, to certify the election. 6 o'clock, uh, current council, about 6:15 to 6:20, we don't want to have, uh, we will transition. We will have second reading of, uh, ordinance number 1065, a couple of presentations, and, uh, some goodbyes. And that'll be it. And then,
If not.
Oh, but when, oh, the CRA is going to meet at 5:30? Do you think that's enough time? CRA will meet at 5:30 on that day. There'll be five of us.
If needed, if needed, if needed.
If needed. Is that, is that everything? So nothing between now and the next two weeks that, uh, is, is scheduled? Couple of liaison meetings, P and Z on the 19th, you guys might have some liaison meetings. Okay, adoption of minutes, 13th, 19th, October 3 and 17th.
Impressive, all the minutes are up to date.
This is excellent.
Thank you, Lenore, for your hard work.
I can make a motion to adopt the minutes for the, uh, special meeting September 13th, uh, regular meeting September 19th, regular meeting October 3rd, and October 17th, regular
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Rhodes, taken by Councilman Lenore. And Lenore?
Councilman French?
Yes.
Councilman Medina?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Ponte?
Yes, and that motion passes unanimously. I would like to say, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, uh, a week from Thursday, tomorrow, and I'll see you on the 28th. Thank you, thank you, everyone.